Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 28th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now move on to the roll call members. Ben O'Quinn, call the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Present.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Present.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Now move on to the approval of the minutes from our March 14th meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion approves. There are second?
I guess.
Second from Sierra. All Sierra say aye?
Aye.
Supposed? Those minutes are approved. All right, now move on to old business. I don't have anything on my agenda. Is there anything from the council?
No, sir.
Okay. New business then. First item up is Resolution 2022-07. This is a waiver of utility fees for Anjali Gardens request. We have a presenter tonight, Melissa Gerard. Before she starts her presentation, I'm going to have Rob read the resolution until it's been read. I'm just going to have a frame of reference as the presentation's going forward. So Rob, will you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Resolution 2022-07 is a resolution for approving the petition for waiver of utility fees for Forestar relating to the Anjali Gardens development. The city owns, operates, and maintains municipal water and sewer utility. This council has adopted ordinances establishing rates and charges for the use and service of the utility. It's the responsibility of this council to maintain the fiscal integrity of the finances of the city by maintaining appropriate fees for services performed by the city. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council may enact ordinances and resolutions for the effective governance of the city, and this council adopted Ordinance 2017-03 authorizing this council to waive partially or wholly tapping fees generally due to the utility as a means to foster economic development. Whereas Forestar Real Estate Group has filed a petition for the waiver of utility fees that's set forth in Exhibit A. The proposed Anjali Gardens development meets the general regulations set forth in Section 3.1 of Ordinance 2017-03. Forestar has paid its required non-refundable filing fee as set forth in Section 3.2 of the Ordinance 2017-03, and Forestar has submitted the required utility impact study as set forth in Exhibit B. Forestar again has petitioned for the tapping fee waiver of an amount not to exceed $403,300. This council, after reviewing the utility impact study and hearing relevant public testimony, deems it's in the best overall interest of the city and community to abate partially or wholly the tapping fees associated with the development. Therefore, this petition for Forestar is accepted and approved. This council approves an abatement of water and sewer availability fees in the amount not to exceed $403,300 and instructs the city's authorized representatives and attorneys to take all steps necessary to consummate the transactions contemplated herein.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. The resolution's been read, so now I'll turn over to Melissa to talk or to give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Gentry. I think I know all of you. My name is Melissa Gerard, and I'm the Entitlements Manager at Forestar. I wanted to introduce you to a few people I have with me tonight in case you have any questions. I have with me Brian Gray, who's our entitlements director. Brian is a professional engineer and was the Assistant City Engineer for the City of Noblesville for 27 years before he retired and came to work for us as his second job. So if there are technical questions, Brian is more than happy to answer those for you. I have with me tonight Buzz Crown from Crowning Associates, who is the individual in the firm who performed our fiscal impact study. I also have with me tonight Mark Bridwell, who's the Vice President of Land Development for D.R. Horton here in the Indiana Division. I think I'm going to ask Mark to come up and speak before I get too far into my presentation. You want to say a few words?
Good evening. As Melissa stated, Mark Bridwell, Division Vice President of Land Development for D.R. Horton, and very happy to be here this evening. D.R. Horton is the nation's largest home builder. We've been building homes for over 25 years in the greater Indianapolis market and currently have 22 communities in the metropolitan area. We are eager to be in the Lebanon market and move forward, including great schools, parks, recreation, highway access, employment opportunities of vibrant downtown, and sense of community. We've been working with Forestar Group for approximately a year on this project, so we've been very close with them, and we have no reason to expect we will not be exercising our rights with the Forestar Group for the lots in this development if it would go through. D.R. Horton looks forward to building here and investing in Lebanon community for many years to come.
Thanks, sir.
So I think I'm going to start. As I started talking to Mark about preparing for this presentation, the numbers that we had submitted with our fiscal impact study were actually sort of Forestar internal projections. But I started looking at, and Mark and a few other folks, that D.R. Horton guided me to. D.R. Horton is actually, oh, sorry, actually building in Boone County right now, just down the road at Trailside. Now, I know some folks have said, you know, some of the houses in Trailside are not necessarily what they would want to see north of Chadwick. Well, I'm here to tell you that there is a variety and mixture of product at Trailside, so you have to be very careful about what you are looking at in terms of comparable. There are 40-foot lots, there are 50-foot lots, but the lots that are most comparable to what we have at D.R. Horton, I mean, at Anjali Gardens, and the product that will be built is on Flagstaff Flagpole Drive or something. It's the northern entrance for Trailside down in Whitestown. And I thought I would share with you what the houses are selling for in Trailside right now, and we, I don't think we should expect that the prices would be too much different for their homes just a few miles up the road, the same school district, you know, same interstate access, maybe two minutes longer on the interstate. So I'm going to start by just reviewing with you. These are base sales prices. All of these do not include premiums, options, upgrades, and as we all pretty much know, it is virtually impossible to buy a new house without adding some sort of premium options or upgrades. So these houses will actually sell for more than what we're advertising them here for, but these are all just taken directly off of D.R. Horton's website. These are the same models that we would anticipate building at Anjali Gardens, the same product line. So this is the Denali, and it is a base price, starting price of $491,695 at Trailside. This is the Camden, and it is a, it is at $459,758 at Trailside. This is the West Haven, and it is $455,485 at Trailside, starting price. This is the McKinley at $449,166 at Trailside. The Sidney, which is a ranch, is $441,391 at Trailside. The Grandover, another ranch, is $439,901 at Trailside. The Bristol is $423,764 at Trailside. And the Hayden, which is a ranch, is at starting base price of $412,991. So the, you can probably add on $20,000 maybe to each of those prices in options and upgrades, so we would expect the price to be significantly above that. I think it's important to bear in mind, because when we get to discussing Mr. Crowe's analysis, he was assuming an average sales price, some a little higher, some a little lower, but the median and the average weighted 50/50 either side of about $375. Obviously, when my smallest ranch price is coming in at $412 plus premiums of $20,000, we are going to be way over that median, and when we've got the $491 Denali model up there as well, those numbers are going to be way higher than what I'm even presenting tonight. So we have a bunch of challenges on this site. I call it a hardship. It's not one of our making. It's actually compounded on a few bad years of sewer planning in several developments. So I think the most important thing to bear in mind is that effluent from sanitary lift stations flows downhill. It's always got to be continuously flowing downhill unless you're going to pump it. So it's best to work with gravity, to put lift stations in the lowest point in a regional area and size it so it will accommodate things flowing with gravity. Forstmann, the lift stations are expensive for developers, but they're also expensive for you to maintain as a city and as a utility, so it is desirable to minimize them. The lift stations can be cheaper for some developers because if they're, if the option is long offsite runs of gravity sewer. But if a sewer is feasible, this trade-off is almost never in the utility's best interest because of significantly higher maintenance costs. I forgot to mention, I don't know, most of you know that I used to be the in-house counsel for Boone County Utilities as well, since before Whitestown purchased that utility from Boone County Utilities. So I learned a lot of what I owe, and I kind of owe a lot to the principles of Boone County Utilities, because I learned most of what I know about utilities from them. So how does that work in this case? This is a map of your current sewer map in the city of Lebanon. The other part of my history is, as some of you know who were on the council back when, I actually represented the Smith family when they came in to develop this same parcel of property about 18 years ago, which was at the same time as Auburn Meadows. So we were kind of going on the same track, and I know how it was planned, I know how it was designed, I know what Bob Wankles was thinking in his head when he at least initially designed it. Now, at some point in time, I think Bob retired, and things didn't get done the way they were originally planned, and I don't have much knowledge about that, but I can tell you what the original plans were. So this lift station down here, the pink, or that's actually a manhole, I'm sorry, it's not a lift station, is kind of the northernmost point manhole in Chadwick Sewer Station, or Chadwick Sewer System. That was installed by Lloyd Smith, Ron and Dale's father, I don't know, however many years ago, like the 70s maybe, I don't know. For a long time, Lloyd insisted that he owned that sewer system, and the city could not make connections to it and threatened litigation against the city, and that was settled as part of the development when the, when the boys brought in the Anjali Gardens system. Oops, sorry, I need to go back on that. Hold on. I need to go back. Hold on. So, and so we were going to design the whole thing. At the same time, the city was wanting a, and right away, which we gave when we plotted this subdivision, Auburn Meadows gave it, and I suppose the new project over on the, on the Neese property up north will have to give right away for a John Mart Road extension. The city's kind of plan at that point in time was if we can get cars north-south of Lebanon Street, so much the better. So we want to create a eastern corridor to route traffic through. So somehow, and this is the way the map is now, the lift station for Auburn Meadows ended up here at the green dot with a Forstmann cutting all the way across the Auburn Meadows or the Anjali Gardens property. Forstmanns cannot be tapped, you can't put connections on them, they are essentially useless in terms of providing sewer service to that property because they have to be under constant pressure, they don't flow with gravity. So this does us no good except that it bisects our property and makes it more difficult to develop. Oh, the, that Chadwick lift station would have been the perfect point for everybody to, the manhole would have been the perfect point for everybody to discharge to, but it's not deep enough. So the parts downstream were not installed deep enough in the ground so that everything could flow to that manhole because they're coming up out of the ground once they get north of that manhole. So this is the plat in 2004, primary plot of Auburn Meadows. This was when we were kind of on the same parallel track with, back then it was called Bradford Village. You can see that kind of green highlighted area was where, is where the lift station is right now. It was not intended to be there originally. There are lots showing there, there is no common area, there is no lift station showing in this plat. But that's because the original lift station was not supposed to be located there. The original lift station was supposed to gravity flow all along this John Mart Road This is where the original lift station was planned to be put on, because the Anjali Gardens property is lower than the Auburn Meadows property, and the theory is you want to put lift stations at lower elevations. Otherwise, you end up bucking grade, and I don't know if I can show it, but... So this is what happens when you put a lift station, same depth of cover, and it's up on a higher point, and you've got connections here, so you've got a man, well, eventually you go here and you, this is all extra deep, deeper than it has to be, I'm sorry, this is all where you have to bring in extra cover to fill it. Whereas if I put the same lift, same lift station over here at the low point, and then I drain all there, I'm following grade, no extra depth, no extra cover because I'm following the grade. At some point, though, Auburn Meadows got ahead of Bradford Village. The developer, this project didn't work for them financially, and they got ahead of Auburn Meadows. And I have no personal knowledge of how it happened at that point in time, all I know is that after I got involved, somehow the lift station got moved up further north onto the Auburn Meadows property. This was a good deal for, and this is just a document that I had in my files that can show you that we were planning the lift station to be located in the Anjali Gardens property because we were negotiating with the city for oversizing to accommodate regional growth in that location, but that isn't the way it happened. So putting the lift station where it is currently worked for the developer of Auburn Meadows. It doesn't really work for anybody else, and in fact, it makes it a lot harder and more difficult for everyone else. So his two entrances are here on 300 North and on Elkhawk Road. You have to have access to the subdivision, that's one of the critical things. So you usually move from where your access and your entrances are, you have to build utilities in the first stage, the lift station if there is one. So he didn't want to build the lift station down here, presumably, because he would have had a very long run of gravity sewer, which is very expensive, but, and it didn't work for him, but there could have been ways for the city to address that problem at that point. We would have given the land, I know we would have, I would have told my clients to give the land if anybody had approached us for it, for the lift station, but we just went ahead and put the lift station on a higher point. That's causing us to have much higher development costs than we would have otherwise, and there are several components to that. The first one is we no longer have a straight run of gravity sewer along John Mart Road that follows grade. We've got to follow, and we've worked with, with the developer up north. We've got to follow their construction easements in their yet-to-be-platted section, this is Section 4 of Anjali, or Auburn Meadows that has not been platted yet, but we've got their construction drawings, and we've, so instead of them building that long offsite gravity run, we're now building it back up to their lift station, fighting grade the whole time. This is no longer a straight run, it's going to have to be curved, and it makes it longer. This is our biggest problem, though. This is what I showed you what happens here when you fight grade. At some points, we're going to be really, really deep on the sewer, and other points, we're going to be fighting for cover when it's popping up out of the ground because we're going against the grade. We have an extraordinarily deep section of the offsite sewer that goes through Auburn Meadows. It, we can, our normal contractors can't even handle it, they're having to bring specialized subcontractors in that do like highway construction, so we have additional expense there. We have a huge expense for all this additional dirt. I suppose it is benefiting the neighbors in Chadwick, though, because this pond here on the south side here, it's the dry detention area now. We had intended to leave it dry in the original plans for, that we presented to the Plan Commission in the first primary plot, but we need the dirt so much, we're digging it out, and it's going to be a wet pond now instead of a weed, a weed breeding ground. So, but, in any event, this is more of our dirt problem. The darker blue, the darker red, the worse it is for us. The red is cut where we're having to dig dirt out, the blue is filled where we have to deposit it on top to get that sufficient cover on our sanitary and water lines so that the sanitary doesn't pop up out of the ground and freeze. So these are our costs here. The additional onsite sewer cost that we have because of the depth of the sewer is $112,92. And this is over and above the amount that we would have in a normal sanitary sewer in a normal 109-lot subdivision. We've got offsite sanitary expenses, that's the line we've got to build, the gravity line up through Auburn Meadows, which by the way, he'll be able to tap that because we're building a gravity line through Auburn Meadows instead of a Forstmann like you built through our property. We have, and this is, you can see, the largest component of our problem is the extra dirt to buck the grade, both cut and filled. Huge dirt job out there, $308,896. There's some backup here, I'll leave it to you. So we've got a problem, we've got a hardship, this project is not developing with these numbers the way it is now. So I knew about Ordinance 2017-03, I had been intended to use it, but I don't really have any choice. So I'm here asking for relief under that ordinance to make this project, which I think would be a big asset to Lebanon viable. I think it's a great asset because it's a price point and a move-up market that we have been trying to attract for a long time in this community. One of the, being on the inside of the development business now, one of the huge impediments that I've seen to Lebanon attracting that kind of market is that there are no comps for this kind of product on the scale that these developers would be building in this market. When we go to have a project underwritten, we go to an investment committee, it's not like a bank, but a lot of the paperwork is like if you were going to a bank to apply for a home loan, we have to submit comparables. So where are the comparables that will get us at the price points? We're trying to use Trailside, but right now our costs are way over even what their costs are at Trailside, so we can't, we can't get to those, those numbers. Our corporate underwriting is not going to prove us to be the first, and there are very few companies that'll want to be the first at this kind of price point. But the advantage is if we get a little help for what we need to make, to make this hardship issue more feasible, we'll be the first, and now we'll be the comparables for anybody else wanting to come in at this price point. So you will have set the precedent in Lebanon for this $400, $500,000, you know, move-up market. I also wanted to point out, too, that our, our hole that I told you the extra cost was over $600,000, we're only asking for $400,000 of that on the sewer side. You know, D.R. Horton's probably going to end up paying a little more, we may try and shave a little off of our contractors, too, but there's only so much that we can do in this market, but I think this is a, it takes a village to solve a problem kind of problem. So I asked Buzz Crowe to do kind of a combination physical impact study. This property was already annexed into the town of, the city of Lebanon, so we didn't have to do this because it was already annexed, but I'm kind of doing the same thing that we would do if you were looking at it from the beginning as an annexation. But we also wanted to include specific utility inputs into this, so it's kind of a hybrid of those kinds of things. But I wanted to show you, and Buzz will be here to answer any questions that you have. This is kind of our summary. And I looked at a couple of different ways. I looked at the financial differences for the city of Lebanon versus the current conditions, which is an agricultural property. But I also calculated numbers based on the average price of new home construction in the city of Lebanon for the last 12 months. Now, my numbers are going to be off because their prices are a lot higher than what I assumed in our analysis. I was assuming, like I said, about a $375, I think we're well over $400,000 based on the sales prices down at Trailside. So on property, there's a couple of components here, but on property tax, and this is Lebanon share only of the lobby, you are going to be gaining $178,792 on an annual recurring basis from what this property is generating for you right now. And a difference of $75,174 from what you would get if you put an average Lebanon new home construction for the last 12 months in here. And I do want to say one thing about that, too. I've assumed that, just to give you numbers, but I do not know that the average sales price Lebanon new home construction is going to be politically viable in this location. Some would have to do much smaller lots, you're probably looking at 50 and 60-foot wide lots. I don't see that as being something that would be acceptable to the city or to the neighbors in that location. The local option income tax, and I'm not even sure if you can get to that price point anyway, but at the very least, that would, that would be a requirement. The local option income tax, we also bring in more money there because the people who buy more expensive homes are going to have higher income to qualify for the higher-priced home. So in terms of local option income tax, we're going to bring in $23,544 additional lift for the city because, of course, the outline isn't generating any income taxes right now as it is, and even over average home sales price of $970. Buzz calculated, and those are all annual recurring numbers, Buzz calculated additional excise and revenue, excise and miscellaneous tax revenue of $18,682 on an annual recurring basis. He also looked at the utility margins, and we'll go over this, that's their operating monthly income for both sewer, water, and electric, that they're going to be making going to be making $143,291, more than they are making now. We will pay, and that's on an annual recurring basis. We will pay park impact fees of $140,174. That's a one-time fee per lot. I know you're in the process of doing a road impact fee ordinance. Those aren't even factored in here. I didn't have the numbers, so I don't know what they are, but that'll be additional income. The sewer connection fee, technically, the ordinance allows that to be waived, too, but it wasn't that much money, so we're just going to pay that. Of $54.50. So that gives up, and then contributions in native construction, that's the actual infrastructure that we're constructing and donating to the city, of $2,816,000. So, and that's a one-time contribution. So we are at $2,961,000 one-time. Most of that's SIA, but some of it's park impact fees and then, and then a little bit of the sewer connection fees. And then additional annual recurring revenue of $364,309. So what this tells me is that for every year that land sits vacant, you are losing, as the city, $364,000 and some change. This property has sat vacant for 18 years that I've been working on it. I'm not sure if there is another buyer to come in and do it on the same metrics that we're talking about, same lot sizes, same dynamics, but I can tell you this, I suspect that it won't be done in a year. So this is some backup for Buzz's analysis. He shows you how he's generating the property tax revenue, the local option income tax, and the other miscellaneous revenues. And then here's the utility revenue. He's got some more charts on that earlier. This shows you the Lebanon levy only, which is all we've considered. We gave you some numbers in the back of the presentation that talked about school board, but I know that's not really your focus. And so again, here we assume these models of $350,000, $375,000, and $402,000. I think I'm about $100,000 low on each of those price points, at least $50,000 or $60,000. So it's going to be significantly more than even what we're factoring into this study. This is generated by Metro Study, which is kind of a live-orthing that monitors home sales in all of the jurisdictions. This is not a document we have generated. It's been generated off of Metro Study software. It's a third-party builder. But you can see they're showing the average new home price for the trailing 12 months in Lebanon of $218,000. This, again, is some of Buzz's backup that shows our kind of mid, lower, and higher models. Those, we, the numbers are all based on this, but I think we're going to significantly exceed them. I don't know why this was like this. This is a little backup for the lit income. This is the utility revenue that shows the margin per EDU that we're estimating for the utilities. And I will tell you, I provided all of these documents to Ed Vasco and to Ryan Ottinger, and I've had no comments from them at all. We also met with them, and I understand they have concerns, and it's tough for a utility to say, you know, waive our fees, waive some of our budget. But I think as a council, you have a broader purview, and you can look at all the financial impacts to the city of Lebanon from this development, and I guess that's kind of what we're asking you to do. Contributions in native construction. Okay, so this is interesting. I did a break, or asked Buzz to do a break-even analysis. My question was, okay, the $403,000 that we're asking for the city to waive, it's not actually cash that you're laying out, but I realize it represents an opportunity cost to the city. So we wanted to look at it, kind of what your payback would be for that investment that we're asking you to make in our subdivision. And Buzz calculated, this is the annual cash flows, and then over here, what your investment would look like. So this orange line is based on the average new home sales price that we have in Lebanon right now. This blue line is your long-term growth in your revenues as a result of a higher-priced model, but it frankly does not even capture all of the additional value I think we're going to bring because of the higher sales prices of these houses. But Buzz calculated here, so if you were actually writing a check to us for $403,300, which is not necessarily what's happening here, it's just an opportunity cost, a lost cost of money, you would have a 1.1-year payback. You would make your money back for about a year, but this property would sit vacant. And if you got some housing on there, assuming a one-year delay, you might get a 1.4-year, or 1.4-year payback, so I guess three or four months. So I think it's a good investment. I don't think that you're going to have a project come along, let alone at the metrics that we're at, in a year. And we would like to just get moving and start bringing some value to the city of Lebanon. The one other thing I think you probably need to factor in is what burden are we going to place on the utility as a result of our home construction? Well, the distinction with our development, aside from the hardship that we have with the sewer being kind of laid out improperly, is that we are kind of an infill site. All the downstream improvements have kind of been made to accommodate us. There's no additional downstream impact to speak of. Very minimal, probably, capacity treatment. But there's no, we're not coming in the middle of nowhere and you've got to build a whole new line to us or something. I mean, we're, we're kind of feeding into something that's kind of already there. So there's no real, real impact, which is what the utility impact fees are intended to defray as a result of this particular development. So we looked at, and I'm just throwing these numbers out here. I know that doesn't really concern you, but, so you can see the impact on the school revenue for this. And one thing I also think is important to know is this neighborhood will feed, and school board's already announced they're going to build a new elementary school, and they're going to need kids for that new elementary school. And this, this particular subdivision will feed into that new elementary school that they're going to build. So, and they're going to impose a referendum, or they're going to have a referendum to talk about property tax adjustments for that. And what I would say to you is that this will help spread that burden of the additional property tax levy as a result of the referendum that the school board wants to do, because you will have additional school board revenue on this property for kids and users that are actually using that school. So we have, I don't know, it looks like, and I can probably let Buzz look at this, not terribly relevant, but 10 years, we've got $7.5 million of value to the city, or to the school board, and $210,000 for the library. Buzz talked to Charles Tate, and they're anticipating $750,000 a year, and that was in our lower values that we were using for this analysis. And so I think it's a good deal for everybody, summary. The city gets additional property tax, local income option tax, tax increases. You got park impact fees. You get miscellaneous revenues from excise taxes and additional items there. Larger tax base creates economies of scale and lower property tax rates and increase the city's bonding capacity for capital projects. And increase money for the schools, which is important right now since we're about to have a referendum for, to build a new school. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or direct them to Buzz or Brian, if appropriate, or even if you have any for Mark, I'm happy there, so.
Any questions from Melissa from the council?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So rounding numbers, about $400,000 in fees you're asking to waive. That works out to approximately $3,600 per lot, correct?
Yeah, it's $1,600 on sewer and $2,000 on water, yeah.
So I'm, I've got to say, I'm having a little trouble with if you're selling a home anywhere from $347,000 to maybe up to almost $500,000, that $3,600 per lot is going to prevent people from purchasing homes, especially in a market that is, I think everyone in this room would agree, is completely overheated.
The, so the problem is, right now, the, the lot costs are, we're not looking at the whole house. This is being factored into the whole house. The lot costs are going to be such that we can't develop with this extra $600,000 ticket for us, and we pay most of those fees. So we, we can't make our margin on the sticks and bricks of building the house. We only make it on developing the land and selling the land, and this project is upside down right now.
Well, that's kind of the chance of being a developer, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here asking to try and correct some deficiencies and do them the right way, the way they probably should have been done a long time ago. But I think it's in the city's best interest, too, because we are going to get this project online a lot sooner than any other available opportunity would bring. And we're going to bring a lot of income to the city sooner than could happen if we dropped it today.
So what I hear you say is that if you don't get the relief, then this project will not go forward because you will not be able to get the financing to develop the land.
That is correct.
And, you know, and you clarified for me, well, the clarification I learned tonight was that your job is to develop the land and then builders come in and buy the lots and build the houses. Is that correct?
I did want to correct one thing where you said we couldn't get the financing. We're not going to a bank for that financing. We are publicly traded, so we go to equity markets for that financing, but we still have an internal investment committee that acts like an underwriter at a bank, and we have to satisfy them the same as an underwriter at a bank would.
Yeah, so they're just interested in checking boxes.
Well, we have to meet certain metrics, and we're having a hard time getting to that. We can't even, we can't even match what they are paying for lot prices at Trailside right now. And, and that is not a good position to be in if we can't match the prices in the market five minutes down the road because of the extraordinary sewer challenges of this project.
Well, my opinion is that the problem was created because of a lack of planning 20 years ago. So my feeling on it is that I would agree with what you, with what you're asking. I agree with the benefits far outweighing the, the waiving of the fees. I just think the benefits are just way out there. And I've, I've lived here my entire life, and all I've heard the last 20 years is we need higher-end homes. And Ray Ingham used to tell me, he's the CEO of Withem Hospital, and he would always say, "My docs can't live here because you don't have enough homes for them." And so this, I see this as an opportunity to fill that gap. And I know somebody might say, "Well, then every other developer is going to want it." And my answer to that question is, not every other project has an issue that was partially created by the lack of planning from the city. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus.
I think it's fair.
If it's the lack of planning, things happen for lots of reasons, but it doesn't mean we can't correct it in a way that we can get what we've all heard people want, or some people want, is a higher-end product to live in.
And then it also proves the market going forward, because if Angelique Gardens is successful, other builders would be willing to invest in that price range as well, right?
That, that's correct. I mean, so I, I think this is a, a one-off problem. And I don't think we can handle any other problem, any other project on a case-by-case basis. But, you know, as far as the numbers that the city would receive, I mean, it's, it's far outweighs what we would lose if the project did not move forward. So that's my two cents. But I would like to hear.
Let's do, see if there's any more. I'll open up to you for sure later to the utilities. I know they want to speak. But are there any additional comments this time from, or questions from Melissa from the council this time?
I just want to say, you're, you did a great job with your presentation. I thought it was very thorough. You gave us a lot of information, and I thought you did a really good job. I'm just going to say for everyone in the council, just quick, my opinion, I do feel like set a precedence for the future. Any other builder that would want to come into Lebanon, they would be silly not to come ask for us to waive their delay available. Why not? I mean, I'm going to save them and keep money in their pockets. Everybody would want to. That'd be the smart thing to do on their end. I just think it's important that we think about those things because eventually down the line, if you continue to waive fees and waive fees and waive fees, it's going to trickle down to our rates increasing and down the road, you know, rate levers are going to be more. So I just want to make sure everyone thinks of those things, you know? It could start.
So Ciara, I just want to comment real quickly on that, right? So for you, you know, we passed this ordinance in 2017, right? And this is actually the first petitioner to you, to come to this, because there is a, you know, as Rob mentioned in the resolution, there is a non-refundable filing fee with, associated with this, right? So they have to think long and hard whether or not they can make a strong enough argument to this body of that it would be, if it would be approved or not, right? If there's, if it makes sense for them, right? So, and I think in this case, I think there's a strong area to make that there were, I won't say oversights, but maybe if we were, you know, had a time machine, we'd probably do it differently today, right? I think it's fair to say that. I think it's important for us at least to think about, you know, you know, does the one-time upfront waiver of these fees justify the long-term returns for the city? And, and again, it's a long discussion, and again, if we need to have more time to think on this, we can, but I just wanted to, you know, it, it's been here for five years, and this is the first time we've had someone ask for this. So I understand your point about setting precedent, but I also think that the, they'll have to come before this board and make that argument and prove, and prove the need. And I think there is a proven need here, and I, but I do understand there is a policy decision that everyone has to make here tonight as well.
If I could just piggyback on the mayor's comments, the five years, the least of the applicants' worries, because Mr. Crowe over here cost me a pretty penny as well. So it, there is some hurdle, but, but like I said, you can always say no. You can rescind the ordinance later if you're just tired with the number of requests you get. But there are built-in controls, right? I mean, we are showing a hardship to you, a specific hardship associated with this site. We are showing how we don't impact the city, so that's another control that maybe couldn't be satisfied by every developer. And we are showing you a price point that is almost double what the ordinance specifies as a minimum for that. So the, the opportunities for meeting all of those three criteria are very limited, I would say.
Any additional questions?
I have one question. A lot of numbers thrown out here tonight, so just bear with me. The models that you had originally were in the $300,000s, now they're in the $400,000s. Just briefly explain to me again how it went up $100,000 per model.
So we were using internal four-star numbers when we prepared this estimate. I wasn't really consulting with Dr. Horton about the models and what they're actually selling for. So I have real-world data for you tonight on what the, the actual houses are selling for. What I gave to Buzz, and we, we actually probably, and I think I had several caveats in here, I actually assumed probably a lower price point to give you more conservative numbers. Like, we gave you a middle point, and we assumed that the, the numbers were going to be split 50 below, 50, 50% above, but I actually always thought they were, they were going to be skewed more to the higher end of that midpoint as well. And I think I even... And I think I even noted that here. But these were our internal four-star projections. We don't sell the houses, so these are, you know, estimates on our part based on what things are selling for in the market. But I actually have, they've got Trailside open now. And we've been working on this so long, I think it was November I started working on this, they didn't have Trailside open. And they do now, and I know what those are selling for. So I think it's the same market as Lebanon, basically. I mean, when you're talking the same school corporation, it's the same market.
Additional questions from Melissa?
Is the utilities going to?
Yeah, we have John and Ed in the back, if you guys wanted to speak for free.
Hi, I'm Pascal of Levon Utilities, as well known, thanks for the thorough presentation. Levon Utilities opposes waiving these fees. We oppose them, I guess fundamentally, because growth pays for growth. And when you waive the fees, what's going to end up happening is that cost is going to be shifted on the rate payers, and at some point in the future, be a rate increase for people who are already in the system. The way it works with growth paying for growth is everyone in the system, like if you were at a parking garage, you're paying for that fee for joining the parking garage or joining the country club, they're paying for that buying. I heard the term, it's an infill. We don't really have infill customers that come in. Everybody pays an availability fee where that cost gets shifted to someone else. So appreciate the analysis. I didn't really comment on the analysis for the city numbers of occupancy costs having to do with things outside of the utilities. We're just concerned about keeping the rates low for the rate payers. I brought John Brand with us because some comments were made with regard to the sewer being improperly designed. And I'm a professional engineer, I've been here since 2018. I don't see that the sewers are improperly designed, and I've never heard of an average cost for a subdivision. Every subdivision site has its own challenges. Some require lift stations, some don't. Some require fills, some don't. And I just don't see the need in this case when it's just maybe 1% of their house price. So, you know, they went and got their will serve letter in, I want to say, October of 2021. And a lot of the diagrams we saw of what was planned were from 2003. And we've got plans that are coordinated with the comp plan going forward, and we've got areas to serve EDUs in that area, and we've got a capital plan that we have in that state. So with that, I would like to invite John to talk about the engineering that happened before I got there.
Thank you. As Ed noted, I'm John Brand. I'm with Butler, Fairman, Seifert Engineers. We assist Lebanon Utilities on plan reviews and technical issues related to developments. We've done that more recently. We've really just done that the last three or four years, so I can't speak to the things that happened over a decade ago. We were not directly involved with those. And I'll try to be brief in my comments. One exception I'll take to Melissa's comments on the technical part, there are issues with downstream sewers that this development connects into. That's the Reese Park project that the city is embarking on to address sanitary sewer overflow. So to make the statement there are no impacts to the utility system is not correct. For Auburn Meadows, the Reese Park project, we've really done a study for 600 EDUs out in this area adjacent to their development, which would include 109. There's a problem that needs to be corrected due to these sanitary sewer overflows. It's great news that Phase 1 of Reese Park has been funded with rescue funds. How Phase 2 will be funded is not clear. This would be an example where if availability fees are paid, that could go into that bucket to pay for system improvements to accommodate growth. That's what availability fees are for. I would not tell you all how to spend it, but that is what availability fees do for the utility. Allows accommodation for growth. And we have three developments out on the northeast side of town that downstream improvements need to be made so that their developments can be accommodated in a great way.
Hey, John.
Yes, sir.
Is it fair to say, though, that if the development doesn't happen, those availability fees aren't paid and then therefore aren't available to be used for capital improvements?
Say that again, Mayor.
I mean, if it says it's farmland, right? We're not, there's no availability fees collected, right?
That's correct. So what I, with this project and a couple others shown out in that, we're trying to, we have developed a plan for 600 EDUs to be accommodated. How that gets paid for needs to be resolved. Some's developer cost, some's utility cost, maybe the city participates. But without, availability fees can be part of the solution, Mayor.
I guess, you know, my philosophy, and I think initially what the council was thinking back in 2017 when they adopted this, I mean, this is an easy plug-and-play, like the utility lines are already there, right? I mean, the developers got to build the utilities to actually serve their development, but the backbone was already in place to serve this site. That's one, I think availability fees are justifiable then, right? But if they still, if they're not kind of a ready-to-go, and they have to do this work maybe above and beyond what we normally typically see, I mean, isn't it fair to ask for some type of relief from that?
Sure. And I, you had a developer previously that built a lift station. He put it where it maybe benefited that development more than preceding later developments that would follow. We didn't go back through all the files and recreate all that. There's times when, based on timing of the project, that if people are paying for it and they put in a lift station, it may be more to their advantage than someone else's. And if that gets totally out of kilter, then it needs to be made right. My point to the council on utilities is the downstream impacts need to be addressed by the utilities with or without this project. It's aggravating the problem if we do this project without getting a better understanding of how we will fund these, to reduce these downstream SSOs. That's the only point I'm making. So that needs to come from somewhere.
John, you said that we're going to need another lift station after the Reese Project?
Well, so the Reese Park, Mike, that's a mile downstream.
Yeah.
So this area out, 40 years ago in Chadwick and those developments, it wasn't anticipated there'd be this much done on the north side of Lebanon, the hospital, all these things. So the Reese Park project will correct an existing deficiency. The system has been, the capacity of the system has been exceeded. I mean, growth's a good thing, but that's going to happen with any system that grows. Now what do we do to accommodate this additional growth is the question.
So the additional growth is going to tax even after the Reese station is completed?
The, after Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Reese Park are completed, then the system will be where you want it to be, where we won't have SSOs occurring downstream.
What's an SSO?
Sanitary sewer, I'm sorry. Yeah, sanitary sewer overflow.
Okay.
So right now, we're doing Phase 1, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, received bids on that in the last two weeks, got favorable bid results, and Phase 1 is moving forward.
How soon will we have to do Phase 2?
You are not under any enforcement actions from IDIM? If you are, then within 12 months, you need to correct it. You are not at this time.
Sooner the better, though. Fair to say.
Yeah, I mean, I would not, my advice to the council and the utilities is, don't wait until it's enforcement. You're addressing this head-on. We understand we have a problem, and you have a plan to address it. So the last piece for Phase 2 is how it will be funded.
Hey, Ed, do you know what the current balance of the availability fee fund is at the moment?
I don't know, but I could find out.
Okay.
They're also asking for availability fees for water, and we haven't discussed the water at all. I don't know why that was even included.
Any additional questions for Ed or John?
So when was that lift station? You guys probably can answer this question, but who and when approved that lift station up there at Auburn Meadows to be put in up there at that location?
I don't know exactly. It was before we sent the will serve letter in October and after 2006. So I could find out.
One comment I'll make, Dick, is from the utilities' perspective, they now have our assistance. We have a utility master plan. They have assistance from Butler, Fairman, Seifert to review these things. When this development came in and a couple others, we started looking at what do we do out there in the northeast corner. Now we're looking at 600 EDUs as opposed to just the 109, so that we don't have these surprises.
John, when you looked at that, did you look at this parcel land too? Angeli Way, did you look at this one at the same time before they came in, or just looking at 600?
We, there were concurrent requests of potential development out there on the northeast side that were all gone, that have been going on the last six to eight months. So there's three separate ones, 109, 400, and 120 on the other. So I mean, there is a plan for how to serve the northeast side bigger than just this You know, in the council's position of thinking about someone adjacent to this development comes in and asks the same question, I believe you'll get the opportunity to answer that again.
I'd like to expand on that a little bit. The way it generally works is that if you have a comprehensive plan which says how areas are zoned, and from that comprehensive plan, you can, Butler, Fairman, and Seifert can look and say, based on the use of this land, it's going to require this many EDUs. And from that, we do our sewer plan. But we're not actually going to put an infrastructure in those areas before development gets there because that infrastructure costs a lot of money. We have about $90 million in water, wastewater infrastructure in the city, and we're not just going to put infrastructure in and pay for that infrastructure and have it not be used. So, you know, the plans will always be adjusted when a developer comes in, and there's just not an ideal way to put it in. It depends on what goes in.
Yeah, you try to create the plan, and then when the development comes in, you try to work with the developer to put that portion of the plan in, to make it work.
Exactly.
Right.
And that's not what happened here, though, Dick, because they didn't follow the initial plan from before when they built Auburn Meadows, because we have the force man going through this site versus the gravity. Any additional questions for Ed or John? Any additional public comment this time? Melissa, you want to close or anything?
I have a few points, and then I may ask Brian to address something in a minute. So Mr. Pascal is saying growth pays for growth, but honestly, that's not really the situation on this piece of property. He's betting that this is going to happen, and that it's going to happen in the next year, and that will pay for future growth. Because this property's been sitting there for 18 years, annexed into the city of Lebanon, and nothing has happened with it. Now, maybe, you know, people look at it, they were smarter than we were about the dirt balance, but unfortunately, we're here where we are. And I'm committed to Lebanon. I personally, if it were up to me, I'd write the check and say, "Go for it." I believe this price point is here. But it's hard convincing other people of that. But what I'm hearing tonight is, I'm disappointed because I did provide these, all of these documents to the sewer and Lebanon Utilities folks in advance for their comments and their responses, and I sat down and talked with them. And this is the first I'm hearing about any downstream improvements. But what I would say to that is, according to Mr. Brand, this is an existing problem. I mean, this is not created by our subdivision. This exists today. So what he's asking us to pay for, in reality, problems caused by the hospital, problems caused by Gulfside, problems caused by countryside estates, that's what they're asking us to pay for when they're talking about this Reese Park project. And in fact, our contribution to exacerbating any existing problem that might exist is only 21,800 gallons per day, which is kind of a drop in the bucket in sewer terms. So, you know, okay, there might be a city project, and you have funding for the first phase of it, but we are a minimal, minimal contributor to it. That is a problem that was caused by a lot of issues beyond us. All of our infrastructure is going to be brand new. We're not going to be having leaks and things with sewer storms, sewer infiltration and water infiltration. Our system's going to be brand new, and we're going to be the best part of the system that that's designed to address. Also, more customers is always a good thing to defray the costs of those improvements. And we're going to be adding 109 new customers here that will help pay on monthly revenue side. Do you have anything you want to say on the technical side?
I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, I, we are trying to get to a marketable lot sales price where we can, they can afford to buy our lots. Because even though we have kind of an intercompany affiliation, they do business with other developers too. The developer down at Trailside isn't us. It's a different developer. They're buying lots from him. So Mr. Brudewell's looking, okay, well, I can buy more lots at Trailside, or I can buy at Lebanon, which one am I going to buy? Even if it's the same company. So that's kind of where we are. We need to get to a price point where the lots make sense in the market. We are not there with the economics right now. We think we're bringing good projects. I believe in it. I live here. This is, I think this is a great project for Lebanon, and I'd like to see it happen. I think in the heart of hearts, most of the utility folks would like to see this project happen too. They just don't, and it's a fair comment, they don't want to be absorbing all the pain themselves in the lost utility revenue. But they're not getting that, they're not getting those dollars today. So if a project never happens, they never get the dollars either. So, and unfortunately, that's the only mechanism that I can come to you. You have this ordinance in place that allows me to seek this relief, and it's really the only mechanism we have to get some sort of relief on correcting the deficiencies of the past and paving away from the future of Lebanon. So, if you have any comments, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Any discussion, council?
I'd like to make a comment. I voted no against this ordinance to allow this to happen. I remember. And I don't like to go against my word, you know, either, but, so I'm struggling here, you know, which direction I want to go. But I agree with Michael, and I agree with Ciara in their comments that this could be, we have to take each one as they come in on their own merits. And I'm afraid this could open a can of worms, but we would still have to look at it individually, you know, and see what the issue is. I think, and this is nothing to John, Brand, or Ed, or anyone else in the utilities, but I think from the utility side, I think there was some lack of planning or oversight of the development to the north has created this problem. And I think has created the problem. I could be wrong, but I just think it's not helped us at all. And like I say, I'm still on the fence on this direction, which way to go. But, well, the thing is, I've been to Trailside. I went and looked at the houses, okay? And they're just like the pictures they got here, okay? And they look very nice. And I'm thinking, you know, that is in the price range that we've all been talking about that the city of Lebanon needs somewhere. And if we needed an area, for years, I've always said it needs to be in that northeast side where we have Chadwick, where we have Gulfside, where we have Auburn Meadows up there, and keep the price points going up in that direction. And that gives us the numbers where we're kind of looking at where people, professionals, will be looking for a bigger size home and price points to work with. So I just, I don't know where to go yet, okay? But I just want... But I just want you to know that I think it's, the development is the right spot. It's the right thing that I think we're looking for in a city.
Good Mike.
Okay, I, just two comments, and one is that if they don't get the relief, it probably won't happen.
Correct.
So, the second thing is, I'm not one to worry about stuff before it happens, about other developers bringing up similar issues and that type of thing. I mean, I'm not, you can't project the future. Ninety-five percent of what we worry about never happens anyway, so we got to just stay in this moment and stay in this, at this time and deal with this one thing right here. And I see the benefits far outweigh anything else.
And to your point, Mike, too, you know, if it does become a problem with repeated developers asking for this and us continually denying it, we can always repeal it as well, right? That was enabling language that we create ourselves. Can always be removed and take the tool taken out of the toolbox as well. My forward.
You asked a question that I have an answer for now. You asked Mr. Vasco what the balance was?
Yes.
Buzz actually looked that up and has other information.
Thank you, Buzz.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Buzz Crone. I just looked up on the Gabe survey. I figured there was a question about how much money is in improvement funds for the total cash. This is as of 12/31 off of.
Last year.
Annual financial report. Total cash in the sewage utility is about $6.5 million. Out of that, about just under $2 million is in the improvement fund, and about $820,000 is in the sewage availability fee fund, and then the rest is your operating funds and your debt reserve funds and so forth.
Thank you for looking that up. Appreciate it.
I have a question that probably took, one's a comment, one's a question. We have a lot of questions sent because this is kind of brought to the council. We're kind of the last group that gets all this information, so we do, we do want to be cautious with things. The other part is, I don't know which one it is, but it's this one here on page nine. I don't know what that is. This is the proposed direction you're going to take the new sewer, and you're moving into Auburn Meadows.
Yeah, that's the offsite sewer for us. Hold on, my computer shut down.
That's where, that's where your sewer's going in and connecting to the lift station, correct? What agreement do you have with that? And since Auburn Meadows changed something before, what guarantees do you have that they're not going to do that to you?
We've been having discussions with them. They're, they're ready to plat soon, section four, in which case we would be allowed free access to that when they build it. They have come back, and this is probably something that we're going to have to sit down and talk with the city about. They've given us a price for that sanitary sewer easement. Well, they haven't really given us a price. They've said, we'll build it for you. And the price that they want is virtually the same as our price to build the whole thing. So, they want us to build it all for them. So, they, they want us to pay them $200,000. Our estimate for our cost is $214,000 to build it. Does that answer your question?
Not really. So, they're committed to this, and they're not going to do any changes on you. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, they've engineered this completely already.
Yeah, once they plat that, that'll kind of lock it in, right? So, they've been kind of having discussions on what the layout of the plat will look like, so that's kind of how they've been able to determine that.
We've been working, we got.
Well, I understand. What I, what I heard was previously, there was something on a plot map that was supposed to be, and they changed it, so I'm just asking that question.
They've refined that further in the last 18 years, and they actually have engineered plans for that now, and we've been following their engineered plans that they have.
Okay.
My turn?
Just comments, yep.
Okay. First off, obviously, I'm a little negative, but I think it's a great project. This is the kind of stuff we want. However, I am struggling with this whole idea of offering them relief. First of all, I think precedence is very important because we've got a lot of development coming into our community now, and, yeah, we can take it on a case-by-case basis. Do we want every single developer in here in front of the council going through this whole process for every development? And these folks are putting together a very nice product. Do you think some of the homes in other areas that won't have those price points, those developers' margins are going to be even lower? So, they're going to be hurting even more, so they've got even higher motivation to ask the city for relief. So, I do think precedence is extremely important. Second of all, if this was five years ago, I would feel a lot better about this, granting them the relief. We have all, among us personally, just in the community, talked about, we are facing explosive growth in this community. And I'm sorry, we'll have to agree to disagree. Okay, the project doesn't happen, somebody will pick up that ground and do it. Or if it's just not economically feasible, then maybe there shouldn't be a home subdivision there in the first place. But I'm a firm believer that if they can't make the numbers work, I feel bad for them, but that's the risk they take as developers. Somebody else will figure out a way to do it. And if we don't like how they're doing it, we again can, you know, make changes or deny. But I just think we need to worry about this idea of precedence and the whole idea of becoming pro-developer when we don't have to be. This is a seller's market. We've all talked about it. There's no home inventory in Lebanon at all, and I don't see that changing unless the economy just completely does a face plant. We're going to, we're the last real area to develop in the donut region of Indianapolis. So, again, I'm very sympathetic. I like your product, but I think they can figure out a way to make the numbers work, and if they can't, I'm sorry.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yep.
You made a comment early on in your presentation about the $400,000. You were talking about it not in real dollars. You explain to me how you're going to do that?
Well, we're not asking you to write us a check and give us cash upfront. It's all kind of opportunity cost and the loss fees that we would be paying over time as these houses come online. So, it's not a dollar that you're giving me today. It's a dollar that.
Could be collected. Kind of like a tax abatement in the business part, Keith, right? I know what you always say about that.
It's the same thing. It's different.
It's kind of like the payment, yes.
Yes, but I'm just saying, though, it's, the money still does not come into us. That same.
That particular fee doesn't, but lots of other fees do, including, you're going to get the TARP fees upfront and all of that, your road impact fee when you're not by ordinance, and extra probably tax and local option income tax revenue. And you will always get the monthly revenue, utility revenue, which that alone is $143,000 a year for these lots.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Keith. Again, there's a lot of information, last discussion's a complicated topic, I understand. Is there, will the council, is it to vote tonight, or we can hold this on the table for our next, think about it, and then come back to it? I mean, there's a timeline, I'm sure here, they want to get moving when the weather's now starting to break here, so we don't want to wait too long on this, but.
I would feel much more comfortable in two weeks or a month from now than I am today.
Okay.
I would feel comfortable with all the information, all the numbers that were presented to us tonight. Maybe we could table it for this evening and bring it up at the next council meeting.
Okay. Is there one?
I can make a motion if you'd like.
Motion to table resolution 2022-07?
To our next meeting.
Yep. Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion's second for discussion. Opposed? Okay. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed to tabling it? Okay. Resolution 2022-07 is tabled by a vote of five to two. Thank you, Melissa. And we'll take that up at our next meeting. Sorry for the delay, folks. That's a big project, as you can tell, what we've been working through, so appreciate your patience. Next up will be ordinance 2022-06. Council to consider a PUD rezon ordinance for Hickory Junction Fieldhouse. Sorry, let me log in here to my tablet. Normally, Ben would be here to present tonight, but he's had a conference, so I'll give you guys a brief introduction, then hand it over to the Carden Associates team. So essentially, this ordinance is a, this is the rezoning and PUD ordinance for the Fieldhouse project and the associated development around it. At this time, the project is moving forward rapidly, and they intend to break ground early summer, so the rezon will need to begin, will get all the appropriate permitted uses in place along with the development and architectural standards to achieve the concept planned. This concept for the area is pedestrian friendly, so guests can stay here, walk to the Fieldhouse, and for their sporting events, and then walk to dinner, or then to entertainment when the sports are finished. There'll be an urban walkable field, the overall development, and they're scheduled to close on the property hopefully by the end of March. So, Ben is requesting that we do suspend the rules tonight and move forward on second reading if the council is willing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Billy. Are you going to run the show, or?
I'm going to take the lead. My name's Alex, I'm a real opposed McKenna, and I'm here on behalf of Carden Associates Athletic Facilities at Billy Bunkhouse back here. He's the director of development. He's been, many of you have probably met and talked with Billy as his project has been reaching this point tonight. Looks like our PowerPoint is up. I also gave you old-fashioned hard copies just in case the technology didn't work. But I think, all right, we're in good shape. So again, you've mentioned Ben and his team, and I wanted to start off again thanking him. It's been a pleasure working with him and staff. We were with the planning commission last Monday night presenting this project to them, and went through the details of the PUD ordinance that was presented and then recommended approval by the commission to you. So, we have our whole team here that can address any of the specifics that are in that ordinance, if you'd like setbacks, and again, as the mayor mentioned, the walkability, the style of the project and so forth. It's about 95 acres. You all know about where it is, the old Holiday Inn site out to the west of town. There will be two parts of this proposed development. One will be the commercial Fieldhouse sub-district, and we'll talk some more about that and what that will entail. And then there's a residential component that will be to the southern portion of the development that will be multifamily cottages that Belcanto, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but we can address any questions you may have about that, that's part of the development as well. It's about a $300 million investment, which will translate to about $2.8 to $3 million of increment per year once fully developed, and not asking for any tax abatement for this. To move on, a little bit about Carden Associates Athletic Facilities. It's going to be perfect presentation, so bear with me, but for the public and for those watching. Andy Card, founder and owner, got a start in logistics, and then moved over 2015, established Carden Associates. Just his love of sports was integral, also business, and then just central Indiana and the community. And, you know, developed this company that has these Fieldhouse, athletic facilities, and then development that grows and builds around that. Billy Bunkhouse, again, director of development with Carden Associates, and then we've got a full team of engineers, planners, marketers, and so forth that really pull these projects together for the community. Some other projects around the area that you may be familiar with, I'm sure the first and largest grand park over in Westfield, now the Pacers Athletic Center. You know, I'm sure most, if not all of you, maybe even have been there. That has just spurred growth and visitors insofar as that area. For Hickory Junction, we're anticipating about 60,000 visitors per month coming in and out to when it's fully developed, to events and practicing sports and so forth at the Fieldhouse, but also to the commercial medical offices, retail, entertainment that will be part of this development. Community wellness center out of Pendleton, that's more focused on pickleball and racket sports, but also gymnastics, and then community health is, you know, a partner there as well, so we have that physical therapy, we have fitness component. Finch Creek Fieldhouse, Noblesville though, is the one we want to focus on because that Fieldhouse is what will mirror and look like what's proposed for Hickory Junction here in Lebanon. You've got some renderings there for you. You can see that there is a courts side, so that's all the basketball, volleyball, footsaw, which is like indoor soccer, sports performance, batting cages, pitching cages, also some food court with a mezzanine for observing. Also, you coaches can sit up there, fans, parents, you know, friends can watch the games. That's kind of in the middle. Then there's the field side, which is the green portion there in the depiction of Finch Creek, and that's where you have your baseball, softball, football, lacrosse, soccer, those types of components will be there. So, this Finch Creek model is what we are proposing for Hickory Junction. We've got some renderings there that, and these are still in development, but we, they're pretty close. And again, our design team, we've got our folks here that can talk, they have specific questions about what we think this will look like, types of materials and so forth. But again, here's the layout, again, at the bottom there. You see the court side, then the, kind of the middle part where you've got the batting cages, the pitching cages, the mezzanine, the food components, and then moving over to the field side where you have, again, the baseball, softball, and so forth. So, Hickory Junction, why Hickory Junction? One is, coming into the community, we wanted to look at Lebanon, and we want this to really augment what you have. There's some comments in the previous presentation about the growth that you're experiencing here and what's happening and all the exciting things you have in the city. And so, looking at the history of the city, and Adam French, and saw the growth of Hickory trees, reminded him of the seers of Lebanon from the Bible, and said, there's our name, Lebanon. So, that's the Hickory component. Also, you've got the, this basketball, so we'll be pushing Hickory. And so, some of our color scheme also comes from the map with the maroon and the gold and whatnot. So, that's where we came up with the name. We like it, we hope it will do too, and we think it really fits with the community and the history of the city. So, the PUD itself, which is what we're here tonight on, and this is really the first step that will allow the project to move forward into the development plan stage and all of the really more detailed approvals and work with staff, utilities, and so forth to make this project happen. Also, this will allow us to move forward with closing on the property and the financing that we have to get in place to hopefully start breaking ground and working on phase one yet this summer. But this is our concept plan you see in front of you. The big box is the Fieldhouse there, kind of in the middle to the right. That's about 200,000 square feet under roof. Again, these are, I didn't mention this, this is all inside. It's not outside fields, outside courts. This is all under roof, all of these facilities. There's also a sizable medical office component that will be there that will work in tandem with a lot of the athletic events and training and whatnot that's going on in the Fieldhouse. Makes sense to have those doctors or that medical presence there. We're working with a very well-known health provider. We're not at liberty to say, because I don't think we are yet, who that is. We're close, and we'll be excited hopefully to bring that to the council and the city soon to announce that, that component as well. But we're, we're working on that piece. Another part of this PUD is the retail grocery, hotels, entertainment. That'll be more, you know, the buildings that you see depicted to the left in the Long 39. And then again, to the south is the multifamily cottages. Those will be long-term rentals, so it's rentals, not for sale, but rentals in those cottages. A high-end, we've got some depictions that, if you're in the camera from the sky, and we can look at those later, you can see the detailed finish of what's proposed for the Belcanto provision or portion. And then also a senior living component that is kind of that large L-shaped building to the bottom left there. So, that'll be another component as well as the, as we build out the development. Some preliminary depictions of kind of how we, we see and envision. Some preliminary depictions of kind of how we, we see and envision the commercial and retail district of the development. Again, you know, very walkable, one of the, one of the parts of the PUD ordinance that's proposed is that there are no minimums on the setbacks, most of, most of the setbacks side and front, so that we can compress things and really make it that kind of walkable, you know, integrated feel, so that people from the Fieldhouse can walk over to the reservoir, the retail, commercial center, same for the residential, and really a walkable, bikeable feel for the whole development. The Belcanto Residential District, some depictions of what those cottages will look like. One of the, one of the changes that we've asked for in the PUD ordinance is some reduced parking requirement. The reason we asked for this, and this came up at the Planning Commission as well, is they have garages and also driveways, and so those cars for those residents will be actually pulled off of the street, and so we felt that because we're, the folks who actually live there will have space to pull their vehicles off of normal parking spots, that it warranted a modest adjustment to that, that standard, that parking standard. The big question for all of you, or one of the biggest questions, when this all going to happen, when can we expect to see this development out there? Three phases. The first phase, again, provided, we get through this PUD and can close on the property and get our financing, and let everything else happen. This is really the threshold issue for this project, is this ordinance this evening. We hope to start working May 22, finish up in December of '24. And that's actually a tight one, it should be December of '23, I saw. So if you look at this depiction, everything that's in red, so the Fieldhouse, the roads and the infrastructure, the residential component down to the south, the Belcanto portion, the major medical office, retail, and restaurants, and one hotel, that's all Phase One. So that's what you're going to start seeing immediately, all the streets and sidewalks, get that infrastructure in, get that Fieldhouse up, medical office building, Belcanto will start working on their portion to the south. And again, we hope to be done with that in about a year and a half. Again, these are kind of, these are crazy times still, materials are hard to think, but this is, you know, looking at it and talking to our team, talking to our suppliers, we think we can get there. Phase Two, then, January of '24, and again, about a year and a half through August of '25, that's everything in the dark blue on this picture, and that will entail another hotel, so a second hotel, to house a lot of people that come in and out for the sports, but also there's going to be entertainment components that will go in there. Retail, the grocery component, we talked with the Planning Commission, this is an area that isn't very well-served with grocery. So, we're not talking, you know, a big market district, or a huge super target, or something like that, but, Billy described in the Planning Commission, kind of a, you know, a full-service grocery, but a smaller footprint model, but that would certainly be enough to handle not only the folks that would live down in the Belcanto area, but people that are coming in and out of, you know, for events at the Fieldhouse, and then also in the area, so that would be an amenity that would benefit not only this development, but it sounds like the larger community in that, that side of the city. Senior living, and I mentioned the entertainment, also be part of that Phase Two. Phase Two wraps up August of '25, moving to the final phase, September of '25, and then play full build-out in January of '26, and that's finishing out all the retail and commercial components, additional medical offices, and entertainment components for the project. Again, it's, that's our anticipated schedule, so the goal is to hopefully have it fully built out quicker. That is our Hickory Junction-pedia. We've had a whole evening already, these points, we're going to labor things, and there's been discussions, but, again, we do appreciate the work and time and the staff and the many who have put into this at this point, and appear to take any questions we have, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex or Billy at this time? John?
I just had a quick question. We went to some of the earlier meetings that you had proposed, and is there room for expansion? Because I know at the earlier meetings we had, the design was a little bit bigger, or there were some other areas of sporting events that were planned to maybe grow, and as I was looking at the chart, I didn't know if you were landlocked where you couldn't expand, because I've noticed that Grand Park's expanded, I noticed the one in, Hamilton County, the one in Noblesville, has the opportunity to expand, so I didn't know if down the road, this has that opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, Billy Bunkfist, Carden Associates. Councilman to that question, what we've done is take a really hard look at what this can support in that timeframe we've laid out today. For reasons being, obviously, we've worked diligently with Rob and Catherine from Dinsmore to ensure that this is a self-supporting area. Once we come down to this body down the road to come and start talking about the bond, what can we do to make sure this project's supported? What fits now, what can we make happen now? Then surrounding this property, I know Mayor and Ben and the team are working diligently at master plan the surrounding 280 acres. Obviously, Carden Associates has much interest in helping with that development as we can as well, but the intent right now is creating this 95 acres as a self-sufficient area, and then working alongside the city with the surrounding 280 and beyond to expand as we go forward.
Thank you. And John, too, based on your question, have you noticed where it's located, right, there, it could be kind of towards the east there, right? But it, that land is not under contract right now, again, we're not making promises with that. Again, the goal is to make it self-supporting, so at this time, it, there aren't plans for that, because again, we want to make sure it funds itself. So, yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple, trying not to get too far down in the weeds, I'm not an expert on PUDs, but in Section 7, it talks about minimum lot size and minimum lot width, there's no minimum, is that typical? Section 7, 7.1, 7.2, I just, that kind of jumped out at me.
So that's in the commercial Fieldhouse sub-district, right? So there won't actually be any residential in the commercial Fieldhouse, fair to say? So that's why there's no minimum?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of the residential components will be isolated in that southern portion of the district of the PUD.
And that just applies to that segment, or to the other segment?
Correct.
Okay. And then, 8.6, B, temporary use and event permits are not going to be required for anything that doesn't use tents or other structures. Does that remove our ability if they decide to have a huge fare in the parking lot? It doesn't cause me huge heartburn, but I wanted to be aware of that.
We don't, I don't think we make people pay for permits now, though, either.
Okay.
So it's not, that's not something we do today, at present, anyway.
Okay. Just wondered.
And, 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 again, will the council, ordinance is going to always be changed as well, too, so.
Okay. And this one's probably more procedural than anything. 11.1, approval denial of primary plat and development plans, no public hearings for primary plat or development approved for the Commission will be required with respect to sub, to either sub-district. Is that typical? And is that saying, basically, once they start, they can go with minimal oversight? That was my concern. Robert?
Councilman, that's something actually that we gave the draft of this document we have before you, that we discussed that particular provision with Ben and staff, and the plating piece, yes, that'll be expedited, because you've got a concept plan, you kind of, we showed you the layout, but importantly, the development plan and all of the specifics that go into that, that will go through normal staff review, we're working on those, that part of the procedure now, so it is, it is unique and different in that it's the PUD from a normal would come in and do your primary plat, and then within two years do your record. It's different than that. So it's not to say you approve this tonight, and we're on our way, and you never see us again, and hopefully what we do out there is what we're talking about. It's not that. We'll have a development plan, we'll be working with staff, we've got, we're meeting the landscaping and materials, and you know, to the, we've got some variation in there, you know, really we have 30% on some landscaping issues and whatnot. But, no, it's not, you're approved, and now go build, and...
See ya.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's not the way that it will go. That's not, that's not the intent of that provision, and we did discuss that with Ben and staff to get to this point.
Okay. Any additional questions?
No, sir.
Normally, if Ben talks about how this happened at the Planning Commission, Keith, you were there, you had the council representative of the Planning Commission, what was the vote on the?
I think it was 8-0, I think.
7-0.
7-0. So unanimous? Yep. I just didn't have in my notes on how that turned out.
7-0.
Any additional questions from council?
Not for me.
Any public comment at this time? Okay. Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance number 2022-06, again, is an amending ordinance of 0716 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City. This city, again, is subject to the Unified Development Ordinance. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission considered petition docket 22-10 filed with the Commission, requesting an amendment to the UDO and to the zoning map with regard to the real estate that's set forth in Exhibit A. The Commission forwarded docket 22-10 after a public hearing held on May, March 21, 2022, to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of 7 to 0 in accordance with Indiana law. The Secretary of the Commission certified the action of the Commission and sent it on to this council on March 22, 2022. This council is subject to the provisions of Indiana Code, and we've done this before. I will, I know each of you have been presented with this, it's about 22 pages, and I'll just highlight the sections. So, Section 1 discusses the applicability of the ordinance, Section 2 goes through the definitions, Section 3 is the concept plan, and that's also attached in Exhibit A to this ordinance, or Exhibit B, excuse me. Section 4 is the underlying zoning districts in here, again, the commercial and Fieldhouse sub-district, as well as the residential sub-district. Section 5 is the permitted uses, and it's set out there on a couple pages. Section 6 is the overlay district, and Section 7 discusses the general regulations, as Councilman, we discussed. Section 8 is the development standards that are set forth on a few pages in there, they're fairly detailed. Section 9 is the design standards on page 8. Again, it is a few pages. Section 10 discusses the pedestrian network standards, Section 11 is the permitting and procedures, and then also the vacation of the right-ofways.
Thank you, Rob. Any additional comments now? The ordinance has been read. Probably this is a public hearing as well? No? Okay. So ordinance 2022-06 has been read on first reading. Again, as I mentioned at the, when I talked about this at the beginning, they are wanting, desiring to close on this property at the end of the month. So, there is a bit of a timeline here, I think the extension's running out as well, so there's a little bit of a time urgency here. So, is there, so I guess they're seeking unanimous consent for us to suspend the rules and move this on second reading?
As the person who usually disagrees with suspending the rules, since we got this with plenty of time for all of us to study it, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. We tried to do that, we knew it was coming, so we tried to make sure you guys had plenty of time. So is there any other, is there any other concerns with suspending the rules?
No, sir.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Make a motion.
Should we suspend the rules?
Oh, make a motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, those rules are currently suspended, and we will move ordinance, ordinance 2022-06, second reading. I will not have Rob go through it again, since we just heard it 45 seconds ago. Any further discussion or comments on ordinance 2022-06 on second reading?
Make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Ordinance 2022-06.
We have a motion to approve, and a second from Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Ordinance 2022-06 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council, and thank you, Carden Associates. Any closing comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you all very much, and greatly looking forward to getting through all of this.
Thank you, guys, and sorry, I'm sorry for the long evening tonight.
Sorry.
Okay, next up, ordinance 2022-07. I apologize, we do these in order as they come in, if there's someone in the audience here to testify on this, but this is a annexation, a voluntary annexation, a little bit of a unique scenario, where the property owner actually owns a parcel, owns parcels that are in the city, and an adjacent parcel that is actually in the county, and they are in the process of trying to construct an accessory structure, essentially a barn, on the property. But because it is split between the city and county planning jurisdictions, the county will not permit them to construct a, what they deem to be an accessory structure, the barn, without a primary structure. So even though it's already within, you know, they have a primary structure, because it's not within the county's jurisdiction, they're not recognizing the fact there is one already on the property. So again, easiest solution for this was they asked us to be brought into the city planning, or city jurisdiction. So again, it is a, they are requesting an annexation of their .6 acres of property to essentially bring all of their property within city limits. There isn't any particular urgency on this ordinance, but it is, again, fairly straightforward on this one. So, that's the brief I received from Ben. As I said, kind of a unique scenario where we have, oh, is the property owner here tonight? Oh, yes. If you want to come forward and explain, if you want to say anything, you don't have to, if you don't want to.
I'm here.
You're good, okay, I did a good enough job explaining it, all right, good. And sorry you had to wait for so long again, I know it's a long night.
I have any further questions?
Okay. So, again, it's just kind of a, again, it's a voluntary annexation, they've requested to be brought into the city, they'll still then follow all of our procedures from a planning, this is just the annexation discussion tonight. So, any questions from this?
No, let's do it.
Okay, Rob, can you read ordinance 2022-07, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2022-07, again, concerns annexation of certain territory in Boone County, Lebanon, Indiana. 100% of the owners of the parcels for the real estates that set forth in Exhibits A and B have filed a voluntary petition, as the mayor indicated. The Lebanon Planning Commission had a public hearing at its meeting on March 21, 2022, and forwarded docket 22-15 to this council with a favorable recommendation, 7 to 0, to assign the single-family residential zoning classification for the annexation area. This council has conducted a public hearing on March 28, 2022, or will conduct as required by law. The council has adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation area in accordance with Indiana Code, and this annexation area meets the contiguous requirements of Indiana Code. The annexation area is on the east side of 100 East, approximately 2,800 feet north of 260 South, and adjacent to existing corporate limits along the northern boundary of the annexation area. Again, it's to include the contiguous public highways and rightsways, so the public right-ofways, and it's assigned Council District 2, and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance, and it's, again, assigned single-family residential.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Any further comments, discussion from council now the ordinance has been read?
Nope.
Okay, at this time then, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-07. If you have any comments, please step forward and state your name for the record. Seeing no, you sure, John? You're good? You're good? Okay, all right, all right. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing then on ordinance 22-07 for discussion, council?
No.
Okay, we'll take this up then at our next meeting with the associated fiscal plan.
Is there, is there any reason, no more bigger than this is, that we cannot suspend the rules to go to the next?
I think, I think we, I don't think we have a fiscal plan for it, and we can't do a, do it on two readings without a fiscal plan, even though it's .6 acres, we still have to have a fiscal plan.
A lot of money to it.
I was going to say, that'll be a massive fiscal plan.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, I'm actually, we probably will, probably pay more in the preparing of the plan than taxes are generated, but you know, it's all right. I'm sure it'll speed things up for you, so I hope that'll make it easier for you, so. Okay, that concludes, again, we appreciate council's patience, and it's a long night for this stuff, but two really important topics for sure to, or three to talk about tonight, so. Any, any other new business come for the council?
A question?
Yes.
I noticed on the claims of probably the last three months, we've spent about 65,000 a month on, on trash. I thought we were trying to get a bid or something on trash for this year, that, is that still in the works, or?
Yeah, so we actually held our mandatory pre-bid meeting last week, so we put the documents out, so the documents are on the street, we were kind of moving through that process, we hope to have those, I believe, in our first meeting in April, is that right?
We've got pre-bids.
Yeah, so we'll have, well, we have three, we had three, we had three people at Yeah, so we'll have, well, we have three, we had three, we had three people attend, we actually haven't received a bid yet.
A rapid attend, right.
We had-
But it was mandatory to attend a meeting if you were going to bid.
Yeah, so that is moving through the process, and that's, again, that is part of the reason why we need to have it rebid, because we are currently not collecting enough based on our trash ordinance to essentially pay what we're being charged by RACE. So it's part of the reason why we need to go through the bidding process. So we hope to have that accomplished, and bids opened in our first meeting in April, selection at our second meeting in April, and then the service would start July 1, is the way it's laid out timeline-wise at this time. So those would, so we would be able to then re-adopt our new, we'll know what the bids come in at, set the trash fee, and then make sure that we're not running a deficit in those sites.
So we still have to pay the 65,000 for two more months?
Probably.
We do, yes. If you want people's trash to get picked up, we have to do that, yes.
I understand that, but why couldn't we get, after you get the bids out, why couldn't we start in May?
Change, in the event that, based on where the bids come in, changing providers is a, can be a tedious process. So we didn't want to, if there is a switch in providers, trying to go from where we're, you know, essentially accepting, approving a bid on April 28, providing trash service on May 1 would have been impossible. So giving us a couple months to transition that out is kind of what's needed. And then we also have to adopt a trash fee ordinance as well to set that rate, to make sure we're covering what it costs us to collect that trash, or we're going to be in the position that we're in now, where we're not actually collecting enough on the trash fee to actually pay for the service we're being provided. So, answer your question? Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we'll move on then to the claims, and we entertain a motion concerning the claims.
I move we pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims, and a second from Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Okay, claims are approved. Any final announcements or discussion?
Just one, Lebanon Pancake Supper is April the 14th in, the dine-in this year, 4H grounds.
Thank you, Mike.
I can motion adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second from Sierra, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, we are adjourned, our next city council meeting will be Monday, April 11 at, at 7:15?
7:15.
Oh, at, at 7:15, yes, always 7:15, I don't know why. At April 11, 7:15, have a great night.